All right, we can go ahead and get started here. Call the order, the county council meeting on March 28th at 7:30. First off is the Pledge of Legions, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible and just one.
Roll call please.
Alder Allen.
Present.
Alder Roda Frada.
Here.
Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alder Strassman.
Here.
Alder Udell.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
Do you have a call or mayor?
All right, thank you. All right, we will then go to public works and new appointments. I do not have anything today, so seeing nothing, we can keep moving along. Consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by Jay, signed it by Gabriella. Anything people want to separate out at all? Seeing nothing, all in favor of approving consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And a opposed name, that is approved, Misty's report.
I have four things to report on today. So first, the senior center patio RFP has been distributed. The TID 4 and TID 6 audits have been completed and are available out on the website. The TID 6 wires to the overlying jurisdictions for the excess increment have all been issued. The Terravessa Egg Park public meeting is on Wednesday, the 29th, from 6:30 to 8:00 here in the chambers. And then some statistics for the spring election that's coming up on April 4th. The in-person absentee voting at City Hall ends on Friday at 5:00 PM. There are 18,893 registered voters. Of those, 3,681 absentee ballots have been issued. Of those, 2,275 of them have been returned, 851 of which have been in person, and there's about 1,400 not yet returned. And Tracy reported the clerks are doing about 160 in-person absentee ballots per day this week, so kudos to the clerks team for keeping on top of all that.
Yeah, I know every time I've been in there, there's been a people voting, so that's good. Any questions for Misty? All right, seeing none. We don't have anything on planning commission. Before we do public works, I'd like to actually move two items up so we can get some staff out of here and home to their families. So if someone would like to move to move up the library board resolution R-5723 and also the finance committee resolution R-6623 to now on the agenda, that would be great.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jay, signed it by Randy, all in favor of those, moving those two up, say aye.
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 And a opposed name? All right, so we will go right ahead. We got Wendy here, library board, you want to make the motion? Jay?
Sure, on behalf of the library board, I'd move approval of resolution R-57-23, library automated materials handling system replacement and service contract.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella, did library board approve?
We did.
Did finance approve?
Yes, finance approved.
All right, and I know that we need two-thirds to approve this one. Are you gonna go ahead Wendy, do you want to say something about JV right now?
Uh, the boards talked about this for several months now and we finally got it approved, but Misty can tell you all the details.
How about Wendy?
Misty Wendy.
(laughing).
Misty Wendy.
Misty might be able to also.
I was looking at Misty Wendy.
Go ahead Wendy.
Sure, so this is replacement of the automated materials handling system, we also call it the sorter. If you're familiar with the drive-up book drop at the library where you have to put your items in one at a time, what is connected on the inside to that is a big conveyor belt that feeds into the sorter. It has an RFID pad in it, so it reads each book, checks it in, and then sorts it. From that point on, shelvers can take items out of the sorter, put them onto cart, and get them queued up to be put back on the shelves. And the expected lifespan of these machines is about 10 years, we're on 12 for ours. We've been planning for its replacement since we opened in 2011, so this is us doing that, it's been on the CAP for as long as I've, as long as we've had a CAP, I guess. Some things to think about, so this includes the purchase of the sorter, which will come out of the fund balance that we've been saving. This is also a 10-year service contract. We have had a service contract on the current machine the whole time that we've had it, and I think it's really important to continue that. The service contract also gives us a 10-year warranty. We've had quite a bit of work done on the current system, so I think it is necessary. There's also a $5,000 budget amendment attached to this, that's because the freight is estimated, and we just want to make sure that we're covering all of our bases. If we did not have the sorter, we would have to make some significant additions to the staff. It does a lot of work for us, so we would have to add, I would say, I think, seven or eight new positions in order to do the work that this machine does for us.
Questions for Wendy?
Wendy, when books come in, when people bring them back in, do they get fed into the sorter also?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and our delivery that comes through South Central, all of that is fed through.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So what do you do with the old one?
I think that we will have to sell it for scrap. It's unusable without the proprietary software, and I think it's probably lived its lifespan, so I don't know that anybody else could use it.
All right, anyone else? Seeing nothing else, we can go ahead and vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed name? All right, that is approved.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, so then we will go to the finance committee approving the second amendment to Ochala Drive Development Agreement. Randy, do you want to do the motion first?
Yes, I move to approve resolution R-66-23 approving second amendment to the Ochala Drive Development Agreement.
Second.
Signed by Jay, and did finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, and what's this about?
Well, this is the, between the city of Pittsburgh and Ochala Drive LLC entered into a developer agreement back in 2021 to assist with public infrastructure costs associated with the extension of Ochala Drive between Ochala Drive to Index Road as part of the development. And if you remember correctly, Ochala is a mixed-use project, and in 2022, then the city and Ochala Drive LLC amended the original development agreement to issue a TID pay-go bond for the completion of the infrastructure. Then the city and Ochala Drive, really, they want to, I should say, the first agreement was, the threshold was set at $1 million, and with this resolution, it would extend it to $1.325 million, just because of some infrastructural additional costs and so forth. Maybe Misty or Mike would like to elaborate, but...
Mike, can I add something?
Yeah.
I'll just add that this is a road that the city requested because of our neighborhood plans, the North Fish Hattery Road Opportunities Analysis and the visioning that we did in 2019 for connectivity in an older section of the city that developed when we were still a town. So, Inventure Capital didn't need it for the Ochala mixed-use project to be able to do that building, but they're doing the road project and managing it at our request. And this is what the actual costs are coming in at now. The original million dollars didn't include the land dedication, which is 244,000 of the additional 325. And then there's increasing costs from Madison Gas and Electric, and then we left a small amount for a contingency for them. These are where the estimates are at right now, and then it'll be based off, the pay-as-you-go will be based off of final invoices and costs. And it still falls within the elders parameters of kind of the payback of the pay-as-you-go developer bond.
All right, so questions, people have?
Any, particularly sensitive to the MG&E, because we had Fish Hattery Road, you know, we spent a lot more and we had some poor communication. Any sense of, you know, what, did they have to relocate gas, underground electric, you know, what drove it being higher, you know, and they're not, I don't think they're very good at estimating, to be honest with you.
I can answer half of it, because there's about a $50,000, I think, increase there, and 25,000 of it was an additional MG&E transformer.
Okay.
Okay, and then some of their other costs were coming in higher as well, as far as the utility relocation there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, we go ahead and vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And a opposed name? All right, that is also approved.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, thank you. All right, back to the regular agenda. Randy, anything on planning commission?
Uh, no, nothing to report.
All right, can we go to public works, Dave?
I move approval, resolution R-5223 approving revisions to the policies and procedures for special assessments and approving increases to stormwater utility rates.
Second.
Signed by Jay, did public works approve?
Public works did not, 2-2 was our vote.
Okay, and did finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, what's this about Dave?
Um, well, this is the assessment of curb and gutter, when we have federal projects or whatever that are paying for that, and it comes back to, you know, our funding for the stormwater is based on your front footage of curb and gutter, and we were, you know, we felt like when these had to be replaced, essentially we're allowing the stormwater utility to pay for future curb and gutter replacements. But I would like, I understand Misty gave a good explanation at finance, and I would, I'd like her to run the council through that.
Yeah, no problem. So really, what kind of started the conversation again at this point in time is that these special assessments tend to be a pain point for the residents as well as for staff. So there's quite a bit of staff time involved between doing the calculations and the outreach and the answering of the questions, as well as on the board of public work, or the public work side, the engineer. And then when it comes to finance, we've got bills we have to send out and monitoring and the postage and all of that stuff, too. So it's a relatively labor-intensive process. The other point of it, and kind of a bigger piece, too, is with the residents, they don't necessarily like getting a somewhat surprising multiple thousand dollar bill when their property or their curb and gutter out in front of their property is redone. So the thought is to, instead of specially assessing out those costs, we would instead wrap it into the stormwater utility rates. And we're able to do that at about 82 cents per urban residential unit. So we did it only on the urban side, not the rural side, because the rural area doesn't have curb and gutter for the most part and wouldn't be subject to this special assessment that we're changing. So it's only on the urban side, and for 82 cents a quarter for the residential or average residential, we thought that was a reasonable offset to have some of that consistency instead of having that surprise bill, as well as just the administrative savings of not administering the special assessments any longer.
Misty, thank you, you know, when, I didn't vote in favor of this at Board of Public Works, but the, I wasn't taking into consideration, you know, the special assessment, how much time that is taking city staff, how much that increases the cost of the project, and I'm looking for things to minimize, you know, take away from tasks that the city staff has to do. So after hearing that, hearing that discussion, I think I would, I'm in favor of this now.
All right, before we get to more comments and questions, we do have one resident here. David, if you'd like to come up, you've got three minutes to let us know what you think on this.
So, one of the reasons that this comes up is because the stormwater utility under the ordinance is created as a semi-autonomous entity and operates, the council, when it created the stormwater utility, assigned most, if not all, of the rights and responsibilities that the council has with regarding stormwater utility services, et cetera, to the stormwater utility, including curb and gutter and all improvements there, too, which by this section are constituted as the property and responsibility of the stormwater utility. So, rights that accrue to ownership of curb and gutter are managed not by the council, but rather by the stormwater utility. The findings and purpose that created the stormwater utility specifically state that the cost of operating and maintaining the city's stormwater management system and financing necessary repairs, et cetera, should therefore, to the extent practical, be allocated in relationship to the impact on and services received from the system. So it's a fee-for-service public, municipal public utility. It's not tax revenue, there's a large distinction under state law. And so, taking something that we know to be a special assessment and moving it onto the larger rate base is directly antithetical to the findings and purposes paragraph of the establishment of the stormwater utility. The other issue is that the rates, according to the ordinance, state that the fee structure from time to time, the stormwater fees that is, established by the board, Board of Public Works, and listed in the fee schedule, shall be modified by resolution. So, the only thing that the city, the council reserves to itself as a power is the ability to use a resolution to approve the budget for the stormwater utility. Other than that, under the ordinances, it has only the power to implement control over the operation of the stormwater utility through permanent ordinances. So since the stormwater utility did not pass this, the council has no power, under the ordinance, to pass something that the stormwater utility has not passed. It has the power to approve it, but it does not have the power to pass something that the stormwater utility has not. And then third, the stormwater utility fees are subject to some regulation, some by the PSC. It has to do with reasonableness, which means that there should be an association between cost and the fee, but then it's also regulated by Department of Revenue, which specifically says that any fees that are levied by a municipality must have a reasonable direct relationship between the cost of the services provided and the fee. In this case, we're talking, again, taking something that's a specific assessment, a special assessment that we know, and moving that onto the general rate base. So that's moving that away from the notion of a fee-for-service utility and more into a tax, which is specifically prohibited under the 1997 Wisconsin Act 53, which established the ability of municipalities to levy stormwater fees.
Vivid, thank you very much. All right, I can open up to questions and comments from the rest of the council. Tim, did you have anything you wanted to add? I should ask that, I see you're online.
I do not.
Okay. Dave?
These very detailed discussion of this, the cost of, you know, I feel the cost of the service, we're providing a cost of service for future replacement of the curb and gutter, so it is a fee associated with the stormwater, you know, it's a fee, you're paying for a service. It might not be immediate, but, you know, at some point, people will have to have their curb and gutter replaced.
I know that, I can change in a second, Julia, another thing, too, I believe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Misty, but we're using ARPA funds to do some of the curb and gutter throughout the city, and one of the guidelines and restrictions using ARPA funds is that you cannot charge things back in those projects. And so, there is a little bit of an equality issue there, I think that, you know, if we did this and we only charged half of the residents for this, for the special assessment, but not the other half, then, you know, is that really fair? You know, is there some inequality there? And I believe it's, we haven't actually done any reassessments or special assessments since 2018, so it's been a while since we've done this. So, it's real, in a lot of ways, it's a good time to make this change and to really prevent some of this, well, how come I wasn't in the ARPA funds and that, you know, so I'm getting charged and these people weren't? So, it's just, it's a lot cleaner. I know that there's a lot of controversy every time we do this. I know sometimes residents will come out and say, well, that didn't need to be redone, so I don't want to pay for that, because I didn't, that didn't need to be done, and there's this, you know, everyone's an expert, obviously, I've been guilty of that, of being an expert in public works at times, too. And so, there's that piece, too, where, you know, you kind of eliminate some of those because it's something that is unexpected, so. Julia, I have you on the list to speak.
Yeah, this question is for Misty. So, what you're trying to do here with this $50,000 is create like a replacement, kind of like a replacement fund, something like that, is this what you're trying to do?
So, not exactly. The plan is not to track this money separately. It would just be rolled into the rates. So how we calculated it was just the $50,000 that we've done the last couple of years for special assessments, how much would we have to increase the rates to generate that same $50,000? So there'll be ebbs and flows as projects change and do or do not have curb and gutter, but that intention is that it would offset that now missing revenue.
Misty, in some ways, obviously it's a little different, but is it, trying to think of the concept, it's almost like how we resurface roads, we eventually go through and resurface the roads throughout the city, but it's not like Wildwood gets charged extra money when we resurface the roads there, or Tower Hill, when we resurface roads there, that's, is spread across, and eventually we go through the entire city, and so eventually your neighborhood will go through this and you will benefit from it. Is it, is it kind of a similar concept?
Exactly, so rather than being charged at the time that your particular property is benefited, you'll be charged throughout the time, and then you will be, your property will be in the list at some point to get replaced. Just won't be tracked as a replacement fund.
So, my other question is because of the comment that he made, is legal what we can do here? We can do this as a council? Or is public work, the Board of Public Works has authority to vote this? So now, you know, I mean, I want to be sure that we, we are doing the right thing.
So, the ordinance does say that the fee can be changed by resolution, which is what we're doing right now.
Other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we can go ahead and vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And a opposed name? All right, that is approved, next one, Dave?
I move approval, resolution R-5923 approving third amendment to the Crescent Crossing subdivision improvement agreement.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella, did public works approve?
Public works approved.
All right, what's this about?
Uh, it's the third, you know, continuing, continuing Crescent Crossing. I don't believe, you still on, Tim?
Yes, I'm still here.
The stormwater, that stormwater pond with Lacy Road, or with Seminole, is that involved with this one?
Yes, so this is, the subdivider has requested discontinued vegetation management on Outlot 5 of the Platte of Crescent Crossing. Since that, pond will be reconstructed as part of the West Lacy Road reconstruction project, therefore subdivider, this third amendment releases the subdivider from all vegetation management and maintenance requirements for the stormwater facility located on Outlot 5.
It was a change, you know, mostly the stormwater, stormwater pond and tied in with the road, as Tim explained.
All right, questions on this one, though?
Yeah, I have a question. So, so after that, the road is reconstructed, and so there is going to still be a pond there in that subdivision? So who's going to take care of the vegetation?
Yeah, Tim, do you want, I'm guessing it's like the rest of our ponds, if the city does, but Tim, do you want to answer that?
Yes, the, this, this stormwater facility is on city property, so the subdivider had the responsibility of maintaining it for the first three years, however, before the three years is up, the city's going to be reconstructing it for the Lacy Road project, therefore, we're releasing them of their duties and just will ultimately maintain it once the roadway is reconstructed.
All right.
That will be included in our annual maintenance, vegetation maintenance that we do throughout the city.
All right, any further questions? Seeing none, we can go ahead and vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And a opposed name? All right, that is approved, next one.
One sec here, I got my screen messed up here.
Yep, no problem.
Next, I move approval, resolution R-6223 accepting second amendment to the library chiller replacement contract with Strand and Associates.
Second.
Signed by, look at that one, Jim, did public works approve?
Public works approved.
Did finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, what's this?
So the second amendment is assistance with the final purchasing and directing of the replacement of the, of the chiller overseeing that installation and setup.
All right, any questions on this? All right, seeing none, we can go ahead and vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed name? That is approved, next one.
Move approval, resolution R-6523 approving the first amendment to the offer to purchase remnant land, Outlot 2 of Certified Survey Maps, 16005 of Ochala Drive and Fish Hattery Road, and approves the partial release from subdivision improvement agreement.
Second.
Signed by Randy, I think, did public works approve?
Public works approved.
Did finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, what's this one?
Uh, this was a partial lot that the city procured during the Fish Hattery Road rebuild, and the credit union is looking to buy a small portion, a small portion of that, approximately one-tenth of the, of that, of that property, there's been some back and forth to get to the final setup, but we are essentially selling it to them for, I think, the same price per square foot that we procured it for.
Yep. All right, any questions on this?
That's very generous of us.
All right, I don't see anything else, seeing nothing else, we can go ahead and vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed name? All right, that's approved, one more, Dave?
Next, move approval, ordinance 2023-0-06 amending chapter 68 to create two-hour parking restrictions in a no-parking section of Index Road.
Second.
Signed by Jay, did public works approve?
Public works approved.
Did public safety approve?
Public safety approved.
All right, what's this one?
I'll let, I'll let Jay, Jay talk about this, he's, it's his area and he...
Yeah, I was actually going to write this ordinance myself, but then public works got involved. This was a request from the developer in Terravessa from Phil Sfiam, because they're in the process of building some buildings that have business tenants on the ground floor. And the concern is that the on-street parking might get occupied by residents of the building rather than patrons to the businesses, so the, the, um, the desire was to have two-hour parking to limit that so that the businesses would be able to have people come into the build, into their businesses without having issues. So that's, we, we're going to need a two-hour parking ordinance anyway. We've, we don't have two-hour parking anywhere in the city, so this will create a new section to the parking ordinance that we can add other areas to as the need arises. And it also deals with a problem on Index Road where vehicles are parking in an area where there's trucks that need to access things.
All right, so two different areas, we're doing a little bit of change to the parking, questions on this, Dave?
Just add, Jay and I had the discussion, you know, the police department, the enforcement would be followed under the police, police department.
All right, anyone else? All right, we can go ahead and vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And a opposed name? That is approved, anything else you have, Dave?
No.
All right, park commission?
No report, our next meeting is April 6.
All right, Jay, we did the resolution, do you have a report for library board?
I have no report, we are meeting next week, I think.
All right, what about commission and agent wall?
Misty provided an update on the, on the patio, and just a reminder, the, for Women's History Month on Thursday, the 30th, or is that, is that tomorrow? No, losing track, Thursday, the 30th, the Phenomenal Trailblazers share their incredible journeys, we passed this out last week, so please, I think this is well worth your time to attend this outstanding, outstanding group of women going to be talking here, so.
All right, thank you. RCC, are you busy tonight?
Busy, yeah. I'll move approval, resolution R-5523 authorizing approval of 2023 stormwater maintenance dredging bid.
Second.
Signed by Jay, did RCC approve?
Yes.
Did public works approve?
Public works approved.
Did finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, what's this about?
Yeah, so this is the, a contract for dredging of three ponds, we originally bid it out for two ponds, but the bid came in a little lower than we anticipated, so we added a third to the contract. Just the reason we have to dredge the storm ponds is because you need a water depth of at least 3.5 feet, so the particles that are captured in the stormwater can settle down and come out of the system, because part of what we do at the stormwater utility is not just to control stormwater, but also to eliminate particles in the water. And some of these are so shallow that they're actually getting cattails growing, and there, it's more than past time for it for them to be dredged, so we're going to do three this year, we might consider doing more in the fall, if possible. There was only one bid, but this is a contractor with past, has done work past with the city and has a... and has a good reputation, and looks like they had equipment in the area, which made the, the bid come in a little bit lower, which is why we were able to do that third one. I think that covers it.
All right, any questions at all? Comments? Jay?
Can you just tell us which ponds these are?
Oh, yes. Sorry. So it is Red Arrow, Gunflint Trail, and Chapel Valley West. And there are three more that were, are considered priority that probably would be the next three.
All right, Dave?
Yeah, Gabriella mentioned, if you go by the Red Arrow, it's, it's getting choked off with cattails, and so that's, it's a good, good first candidate.
All right, anyone else? Seeing nothing else, we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, name? That one's approved. Next one.
I move approval of resolution R 6123, approving change order with AE2S for the contract for services for the Seminole Glen Stormwater Study.
Second.
Sent by Jay. Did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did RCC approve?
Yes.
All right, what's this about?
Yeah, this is a pretty straightforward change order. There's actually no cost impact. They're just making some changes so they can add some modeling for additional solutions to the, to the stormwater issue, and the public meetings will go from two to three, which they believe is sufficient. So no, no, no cost impact, it's just something formally we have to go through to make the change.
Three to two, right?
Three to two, yes.
Three to two, all right. Three, okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we can vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, name? All right, one more.
I move approval of resolution R 6723, approving 2023 to 2025 Stormwater Utility Vegetation Management Program Contract.
Second.
Sent by Jay, I guess. Did RCC approve?
Yes.
Did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
The finance approve?
Finance approved.
And what's this about?
Yeah, this is a three-year contract because we plant native vegetations in our stormwater facilities. That vegetation takes at least three years of maintenance in order to get their roots down and prevent invasive species and other, other plants, non-durable plants, from taking over. So we've contracted with Heartland to do, to do this for three years for new facilities, and then we do also do maintenance on native facilities in our, throughout the city. Usually, that's a separate contract, and Anna Healy is involved with that, but this is the one we'll, we'll get new native plants established in, in lots of places around the city.
All right, before we do public comment, we do have, or, sorry, we do have public comment. Now, David, if you'd like to come up, you got three minutes to talk about this one.
So I just have three general comments. So first of all, I've been going back and looking at a lot of stormwater-related reports, and Heartland, as far back as 2005, has done outstanding work for the city in terms of its analysis, recommendations, et cetera. So we should, as a city, be happy that we have Heartland on this. The other aspect is that this is a water quality issue. So stormwater ponds are great at removing solids because it's just settling, but regarding dissolved pollutants such as nutrients, phosphorus, and nitrogen, it really depends on the vegetation that's present within the pond itself. So current standards for constructing ponds have them have a bench in there of some form and in some way that's underwater submerged where those plants get planted for native plants, and that's how nutrients like phosphorus and nitrogen get removed. And then there was some discussion at the Public Works about having residents be responsible for maintaining stormwater pond vegetation. I've thought about this. I spent about 1,000 hours so far in Seminole Glen Kettle Woodland, and that's tough enough. I think it'd be, it's a really tough stretch. I think there's no possible way that you could get residents to establish native vegetation, and even maintaining that native vegetation, given that much of it exists within the context of the pond itself, would be quite a bit of a stretch. So I think it's a, it's a nice goal, and we'd love to have community involvement, but in this regard, I think it's going to be, it'll be a very tough thing to maintain in the long term.
Thank you.
Can I ask Dave a question, just a general?
Sure.
Dave, what do you know about, you know, wild rice, as far as something taking up the nutrients you mentioned? You know, I, I've seen, you know, lakes that have it are always clean.
Yeah, I think it takes a pretty really specific, I'm not an expert by any stretch of imagination, I think it takes a very specific environment for it to, to grow well. And I've read a few things where it grows really well, it tends to grow super well. So it's possible, but this is one of the great things about having Heartland. Heartland would know this stuff to a T. You know, they're extremely well qualified, so...
Thank you, sorry to trouble you.
All right, Gabriella, question?
Yeah, just wanted to follow up on that, just one note about invasive species management is actually, people can be very well-intentioned in trying to remove invasive species, but if it's not done properly, you can actually inadvertently expand the invasive species significantly by spreading the seeds. So it's a complicated process that is better left to professionals or someone that has lots of training. And if anyone's interested in removing invasive species, I highly recommend you talk to Anna Healy, our forester and naturalist, before you do so and get some, some advice on that.
Other questions or comments on the vegetation plan? Do you not see any? So we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, name? All right, that is approved. Anything else first you see?
Yeah, two just reminders about dates. Our spring waterway cleanup is Saturday, April 15th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. There's four locations, Dunsmarsh, Swan Creek, Corey Hill, Yarmouth Greenway, same as, as in past years, and just can show up on the day. City will provide all the supplies, and they'll have to sign a waiver, and it'll be a fun event, it always is. So April 15th for that one. And then we also have our spring recycling event on April 29th from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m., and that's electronics recycling and confidential paper shredding. So save the date. And if we, we do need, I, I do believe we still need some volunteers for the recycling event on April 29th to help coordinate that, so if anyone's interested, you can let Phil Groupie know.
All right, thank you. What about TTC?
No report.
All right, Seda?
Yes, Seda's working on, with Ellers to move forward, three TID projects. One, number 10, is a rehab project, which is actually a boundary amendment, that's on North Fishhattry Road. Number 16 would be a rehab creation for the Rimrock area, and number 17, a rehab creation for Anton Drive. All the work will be, you know, done by Ellers and Seda. The planning commission can expect to look at something by July 18th, and something coming before council by August 8th. That's it.
All right, thank you. Ag and Row Affairs?
Uh, nothing to report.
All right, what about EMS?
Uh, nothing to report.
All right, Bike Committee?
Um, the Bike Committee is very pleased that the, you know, passing of the amendment to the TID, ARPA, and is looking into kind of how to implement it and what recommendations to give to council. We're also going to be meeting with the site director for the Boys and Girls Club about a potential B-cycle in the future.
All right, Tree Advisory?
No report.
All right, Landmark Preservation?
No report.
All right, Housing Advisory?
Uh, nothing since our last meeting.
All right, Healthy Neighbors?
Uh, we have a meeting next week to review our applications.
All right, and Jim, Police Facility Oversight?
Yeah, we're in the beginning phases of basically getting things organized. The chief will be on vacation for a couple of weeks, but we are in the RFP process, I take it, Misty, for an architect right now. So soon as we get that back, that's probably when a lot of the things will start.
All right, great. Anything else unfinished, Randy?
No, nothing else to report.
All right, anything on personnel?
No report.
All right, anything on public safety?
Uh, just, activities are, are picking up. The farmer's market, city farmer's market is starting again here shortly, and also, you know, we have a diverse city. One thing we approved tonight was the Cambodian New Year celebration down on, down Fishhattry at the, at the Buddhist facility there, so I need to, to have, have that diversity in our city.
Excellent, thank you. And no unfinished business or new business? Mayor's report? A few things. Uh, one actually to add to the Bike Committee report, B-cycle stations have been getting installed throughout the city. There's number, actually might all be done now, and I know some people have used them. Hopefully, the weather gets a little better and doesn't snow another foot, so we can use them a little more. A couple other things, on April 25th council meeting, we are going to be celebrating the 40th anniversary of Fitchburg becoming a city, and so I know that we are inviting previous mayors to come for a resolution that night. I, apparently, I can't have a Tuesday off yet, so I'll be there as a ex-person at that point in time, but for the next mayor, they'll be doing that. And then I also forgot to grab the sheet. I want to congratulate Misty and her team. I sent this to everyone here already, but I want to let the public know that we, the finance team, we've got a circuit of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, and it really speaks to the transparency and the thoroughness that we do our reports, and so I just wanted to recognize and thank Misty and your team for the continued excellence. I know this is something we've gotten for, so long as I'm aware of, but it's good to know that we continue to do that, so thank you for that. And so that's all I have. We can go to all the reports, and it is District Two this week. Julia?
Nothing to report.
All right, Gabriella?
No report for me.
All right, Jay?
I have a couple of things. Tomorrow is the, uh, meeting in this very room regarding the Terre Vessa Ag Park, so if you're interested in that, this would be the place to be because it will be an interesting discussion. Also, starting on Monday, the Sine Road reconstruction project will resume, and starting Monday, the Sine Road, Lacy Road intersection will be closed, so you will not be able to go through there. That'll be about six to eight weeks, and then that intersection will reopen, and then Cheryl Drive and Sine Road will close. So the idea is to keep one of those intersections open at all times, but the, there were really problems with the construction last year as they tried to keep everything open all the time, and it just wasn't working. So this way, they'll be able to get the project done much more efficiently, so look forward to that.
All right, Shannon?
No report.
No report.
All right.
Jim, no report.
Oh, Jim, you're good, too? Okay, all right. Randy?
No report.
All right, Dave?
Jason, to the building inspections, the, for cleaning up, there were a lot of garbage down King James Way, and they cleaned it up last week. And a special call-out, you know, we get many complaints from residents, and sometimes you get one that, not a complaint, but a compliment, and I had to pass along, a resident in Jamestown on Saturday during the, during the blizzard, needed to go somewhere and a car had parked in front of his driveway, and he didn't know who it was, so he called the police, non-emergency number. The officer, you know, managed to fight his way over there. Our street wasn't plowed, or I think maybe it got plowed by then, but he, he found the, he found the resident, or he found the person that owned the car, got him to move it, and then he shoveled out the bottom of the resident's driveway. So he, the resident has a bad, is kind of disabled, has a bad leg, and he shoveled out the bottom, and that was Officer Clint Gretzky. So I just want to recognize, recognize that act of going above and beyond, so that's all I had.
Thank you. I actually worked with his wife. She's a teacher.
Oh, really?
Joe?